Good evening. Welcome, everyone. Just to update the public and those that are on Zoom, we're going to start the meeting, do the pledge, our moment of silence, we're going to do our student report, and then we have to go into executive session for probably like 20, 30 minutes to handle something with the superintendent search. So I apologize for everyone's time, but we will be back as soon as we can. So like I said, it could be 15 minutes, it could be 30 minutes. So I apologize for that. To start the meeting, pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10-4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cablevision Channel 1301 and Verizon FiOS Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the township clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, September 16th, 2025. The board will take action on payment of bills and other agenda items. Mr. Wydell?
The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the board, have the right to record public board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that the act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public board meeting. Therefore, the board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of this board. The board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dunn. Ms. Francisco.
Here.
Mr. Giordano.
Here.
Ms. Jodri.
Here.
Ms. Mazone.
Here.
Mr. Slade.
Here.
Mr. Solikowski. Mr. Van Cetason.
Here.
And Ms. Stantuno.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the pledge and remain standing for a moment of silence? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands in our nation under indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Please remain standing. The Board of Education acknowledges the death of Tracy Ellis, retired special education teacher, and Joel Goodman, and retired teacher, and expresses deepest sympathy to their family and friends. Please be seated. Ms. Mazone, you wanted to do the code of ethics?
The board member refers all complaints to the chief administrative officer and an act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution.
Thank you. The board would like to welcome our new student rep, Jordan Rosenthal.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jordan Rosenthal, and I am the OBHS student president for the 2025-26 school year. I'm really excited to be here, and I have been a member of the Student Senate since freshman year. I also lend a hand with our plays and musicals, and I have been a member of the peer membership this year. And I also work part-time at Wawa, even though low-key feels like a full-time job sometimes. Our school year just started, and the energy within our high school community is thriving. Last night was our senior dinner cruise, and thanks to our wonderful advisors, Ms. Fuentes and Mr. Post, we had a wonderful night. Our fall sport season is underway, with most of our teams having their senior nights. This Friday is our first home football game, so make sure you're wearing purple, and you're there to support our seniors for their senior night. Student Senate will also be there selling our rally towels for $5. Tomorrow, tickets go on sale for the Homecoming Dance, which is October 9th. And October 3rd is Old Bridge's favorite holiday, Pink Out. The Student Senate is hard at work making sure this special year for the student body. We have so many great events coming up, and I look forward to a great school year. It is my proud honor to serve as the Student Senate President, and thank you for your time, and remember to always be kind to each other. Go Knights!
Thank you very much. Great job. Can I have a motion to go into executive session? Francisco will move.
Ms. Almo, second.
Can we do an all in favor?
All in favor?
Okay. Aye.
All right. The board will go into executive session. We'll need about 20 minutes. We're going to go down to room 302.
David, let me know when you're ready.
Ms. Mazon, motion.
Francisco will second.
Roll call, I need discussion. Roll call, please.
Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Mazon?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solkowski is absent. Mr. Vangatason?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn is absent. Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two for approval and minutes passes.
We did the student report. Recognition. So I'll do a motion for recognition first.
Giordano, motion.
Vangatason will second.
You want to do retirements, please?
Move the board to approve the retirement of the following staff members with deep appreciation for their years of dedicated service to the district. Adriana Fernandez from Madison Park, Karen Vandervolk Transportation, Donna Strupoli Piccolo from Solk, Judith, what?
Sandberg.
Sandberg, same thing. Judith from the Grade Nine Center and Teresa Sebar from Memorial. Altogether, there was 118 years of service. So thank you guys and congratulations on your retirement.
Also, you know, thanking SEPTA for their hard work with the class, the, oh, excuse me, the classrooms in the Grade Nine Center for the students and the board is going to recognize Diane and Jeff Michael, Kim and Tertola, SEPTA with Lowe's manager Mike Mann, Lowe's East Brunswick manager Jonathan Grunjalis, you know, and awarded SEPTA as Home to Own Hero. So congratulations to SEPTA and thank you to all of the board members for your hard work on that project. Any other discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Yeah, so I have seen the classroom at the Grade Nine Center. It came out very well and I'd like to thank everyone, including Diane, Jeff, and Kim for their collaboration and their leading the community with this effort. It came out very well. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I also, I saw the Grade Nine Center, but I'm looking forward to see the new classrooms and as a teacher, that would be my dream to teach in a classroom like that, so.
Can we set up a visit to go and get in there? Because I would love to see those classrooms. I've heard so many amazing things about them and what an undertaking and an amazing job done by SEPTA and everybody else who was involved to better our students and their experiences here in the district. So yeah, I would love to get over there and see those classrooms. Great job, everyone.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Mazon?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solkowski is absent. Mr. Vangatason?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn is absent. Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two for recognition passes. Congratulations to all.
Superintendent's report. Dr. Brayden?
Thank you, Ms. Dantuno. I only have one item and I'm happy to report that we've had so far two of our superintendent meet and greets last Friday and then we had one today. And they were well attended at both of those events. We had one at Gregory's Coffee and one at Prep Coffee. I guess I might have a coffee addiction, but it was a great opportunity for me to get to know our community and to hear some of the concerns about our school system and some of the things that we do really well and some of the things they look forward to in the future. So it's an exciting time for me as I get more acclimated to our community and what our needs are. So we have a few more of those. The next one is going to be an evening one, as I did here. Some board members and some community members asked for that. So that'll be on September 29th. We'll put information out there on a Monday night at the high school in the cafeteria so we can accommodate a larger crowd. Today, we didn't anticipate the coffee shop being that busy at noon, but it was very crowded and it was very hot there. So we're going to have that next one. I encourage anyone that can attend, please do so, and I look forward to hearing from you. If you can attend, please email me, call or reach out. I want to hear what the community has to say so we can best serve all of our students' needs. Thank you, Ms. Dantuno.
Progress towards goals. I could say that the board has many hours scheduled ahead of us to, with the superintendent search. So that's going to be a lot of our hours in October. And then the dedication to the finances and the long-term planning meeting on October 15th. Any correspondence?
Yes, three pieces tonight. First correspondence is from Eric Karan Jawala. Dear Mr. Wydell, please have this email read during the board meeting tomorrow. Thank you. To the members of the Old Bridge Board of Education, I am writing and expressing my profound disappointment and concern regarding the recent replacement of Dr. Raymond Payton as principal of Memorial Elementary School. This decision has not only shocked our community, but has also raised serious questions about the transparency and integrity of the board's actions. Under Dr. Payton's leadership, Memorial Elementary School flourished. His unwavering dedication and hard work created an environment where students thrived academically and personally. The numerous state and national awards the school received are a testament to his exceptional leadership and the positive impact he had on our children's education. He was more than just a principal. He was a dedicated leader who invested his heart and soul into our school community. The timing of Dr. Payton's replacement is highly suspicious, especially given that he was widely considered the top candidate to succeed outgoing superintendent, Mr. Sidedino. The public is well aware of the significant fiscal burden placed on Old Bridge taxpayers under the current administration's financial oversight. The lack of clear communication surrounding Dr. Payton's departure only fuels speculation that his replacement was a politically motivated decision rather than one in the best interests of our schools. We, as concerned parents and community members, demand an explanation. The Board of Education has a responsibility to be transparent with the public it serves. Honesty, integrity, and openness are essential for building and maintaining the community's trust. We ask that you provide a public and honest explanation for Dr. Payton's replacement. We deserve to know the truth about why such a dedicated and successful leader was removed. Peace and blessings, Eric Karan Jawala. P.S. Also, we are mourning the loss of an awesome educator, Joel Goodman, who taught for around 40 years in Old Bridge. May his soul rest in peace. Can we please have a moment of silence in remembrance of this great soul and educator after reading the community correspondence? Just as an aside, we did have the moment of silence included prior. And many blessings to Mr. Goodman's family. Second correspondence is from Armon Karan Jawala, parent of a Memorial Elementary student. Mr. Wydell, please read this email in the coming Board of Education meeting to be held on Tuesday, September 16th, 2025. Dear Mr. Wydell, I am Armon Karan Jawala, resident of Old Bridge as, and writing as a concerned parent of a student who attended Memorial Elementary School under the leadership of Dr. Raymond Payton. I have now known Dr. Payton since 2012, when my son began kindergarten at Memorial. And in all those years, I have always known him to be one of the most polite, courteous, and helpful leaders in our community. Dr. Payton's selfless service to both the school and the community has been extraordinary. My son often spoke fondly of how Dr. Payton greeted every child, teacher, and every staff member each morning and wished them farewell in the afternoon. He fondly remembers Dr. Payton daily going to each and every classroom to see the students and in the cafeteria during lunchtime to ensure that every student received a meal and that no child went hungry. He has consistently treated every member of the staff, teachers, custodians, administrative employees, with the utmost respect, always addressing them with a mister, misses, or miss. While visiting the school, we have frequently seen him help the janitor clean messes created by kids. I can go on and on about how respectful Dr. Payton was towards everyone. Dr. Payton's dedication and leadership have contributed to the many awards and recognitions that Memorial Elementary School has received over the years. More importantly, his daily presence has created a warm, welcoming environment where children feel valued and supported. For these reasons, I was deeply troubled to learn that Dr. Payton has been replaced with an acting principal. What concerns me even more is the lack of communication with parents and the community regarding this decision. The absence of clear information has created confusion and frustration among families who care deeply about the school and its leadership. I respectfully request that the district give Dr. Payton a fair chance for his side of the story to be heard. Also, give full consideration to reinstating Dr. Payton so that he may continue his excellent service to the children and the community. I believe it is only fair that Dr. Payton be given the opportunity to be heard rather than having conclusions drawn without parental input or understanding. Open communication and collaboration with families... Is that one minute left or... Okay. Open communication and collaboration with families are critical to maintaining trust and ensuring the best possible environment for our children's education. Thank you for your time and for your commitment to the students of Old Bridge. I look forward to your response and to a resolution that reflects fairness, transparency, and the best interests of the school community. Sincerely, Armon Karan Jawala, parent of a Memorial Elementary School student. Okay. And the third correspondence is from SEPTA. Hello, Mr. Wydell, can you please read the filing? SEPTA meeting this Thursday at Voorhees School, 7:00 p.m., enter through the back of the building. Guest speakers and introductions include Dr. Tuie, Dr. Brayden, and Dr. Orico. Sincerely, Kim Ventarola, Diane Michael, Push Cower, and Colleen Colick. That concludes the correspondence, but I'll just send as a reminder, SEPTA meeting this Thursday at Voorhees School, 7:00 p.m., enter through the back of the building. Guest speakers and introductions include Dr. Tuie, Dr. Brayden, and Dr. Orico. Thank you. That concludes correspondence.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, two of those letters, similar to last week's, ask for transparency and accountability and frankly, information, totally understandable and the frustration is understandable, too. This is a matter of personnel. You've all heard me say it before. You'll hear me say it again. And there is, of course, due process. Everybody gets to tell their story and their side of everything before any action is considered. However, this is a matter of personnel. It involves many members of the staff of the school district and we will not give public updates because they have privacy rights that we are going to respect, we're required to by law, and we intend to.
Thank you. Any more update on special committee reports on top of what we did last week? So we'll open up the mic of hearing of the residents on any agenda item only. Reminder, the binder is at the podium, so if you're going to speak, please sign in. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public portion. For policy, can I have a motion on items one, A and B?
Ms. Mazon, motion.
Jodri, a second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Mazon?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solkowski is absent. Mr. Vangatason?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn is absent. Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolution one for policy carries.
Curriculums, items one through three, can I have a motion, please?
Giordano, motion.
Francisco will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Mazon?
Yes to one and two, no to three.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solkowski is absent. Mr. Vangatason?
I'd like to do the same. One and two, yes. Three, no.
Mr. Dunn is absent. Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one, two, and three for curriculum professional development passes.
Finance, items one through 11, can I have a motion, please?
Jodri will move it.
Francisco will second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
I do have just one correction, actually. On 11, it should actually be the 25-26 school year. So just administrative correction on number 11, 25-26 school year. And we'll go to the roll call. Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solkowski is absent. Mr. Vangatason?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn is absent. Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Mazon?
Yes.
And Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one through 11 for finance passes.
Athletics, item one, can I have a motion, please?
Ms. Mazon, motion.
Slade, a second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Solkowski is absent. Mr. Vangatason?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn is absent. Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Mazon?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolution one for athletics passes.
We don't have anything on non-certificated personnel office tonight, nor do we have anything under non-certificated personnel operational. So we'll move on to non-certificated personnel other. Can I have a motion on items one through seven?
Francisco will move.
Jodri will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Mazon?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solkowski is absent. Mr. Vangatason?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn is absent. Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one to seven for non-certificated personnel other carries.
Certified personnel, we have items one through 20. Can I have a motion, please?
Ms. Mazon, motion.
Giordano, second.
I do have an administrative correction on here. Hold on one second. It was Giordano on the second. So we have an administrative correction to resolutions 19 and 20. We are going to be removing Adam Brodsky of Carl Sandburg Middle School from both resolutions. So we'll just be voting on Emily McHugh from OBHS and we'll be reposting the position for Carl Sandburg Middle School. So administratively removing Adam Brodsky from both 19 and 20.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yep.
For number 17, usually when I see all of the schools, I kind of go through all of them in my head or count. And I think maybe Sharah is missing from this list. I was just curious why. I'm not sure if there's another one missing because some of them are here twice. So I was just wondering, it's regarding the Acadians implementation. So I was just curious.
There are some, there are some schools that don't have an individual in their building that's representing, so we have other staff that are going to cover there.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Mazon?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solkowski is absent. Mr. Vangatason?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn is absent. Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one to 20 for certified personnel passes.
Thank you. Non-certificated personnel, transportations, items one through five, can I have a motion, please?
Jodri will move it.
Vangatason will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Mazon?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solkowski is absent. Mr. Vangatason?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn is absent. Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
And Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one to five for non-certificated personnel transportation carries.
Thank you. Transportations, items one through three, can I have a motion, please?
Francisco will move.
Vangatason will second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Mazon?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solkowski is absent. Mr. Vangatason?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn is absent. Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Transportation, resolutions one, two, and three carries.
Supplies, equipment, and services, items one through five, can I have a motion, please?
Jodri will move it.
Ms. Mazon will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solkowski is absent. Mr. Vangatason?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn is absent. Ms. Francisco?
Sorry, can we just go backwards for a second? So I'm reading and I was reading through this today. The resolution for number four, can you just give us a little...
So there's two resolutions here, four and five. Essentially, what it does with both resolutions is it allows us, again, I talked a little bit last week, the software and hardware for the planetarium to repair that. It's proprietary software. The state of New Jersey doesn't recognize sole source as a vehicle procurement. We have to do a proprietary bid. So the way I've set this up is four is to do a bid, which you have to take the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Then, in just some additional research and back and forth, I added resolution... I added resolution number five, which allows for the purchase of proprietary software through competitive contracting. So, for that one, other companies can provide other alternate equipment, and then for that, you don't have to take the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. You can essentially have a populated criteria and choose the vendor that best meets your needs for that. So, just both of these resolutions allow either procurement, probably gonna go with number five, but just putting both options on there to kind of have both avenues.
Awesome, I appreciate the update, because I know when I was reading it, I was like, let me make sure I understand, because if I, you know, if I'm not understanding it exactly, then I don't think everybody else is either, so thank you.
No problem. So, it is your vote.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jojri?
Yes.
Ms. Mazon?
Yes.
And Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one through five for supplies, equipment, and services passes.
Thank you. Miscellaneous, items one through nine, can I have a motion, please?
Ms. Zone, motion.
Slate, a second.
Thank you, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Solkowski is absent, so we're going to Mr. Venkatesan?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn is absent, so we're going to Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jojri?
Yes.
Ms. Mazon?
Yes.
Mr. Slate?
Yes.
Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one to nine for miscellaneous passes.
Board Secretary and Board Business, item one, can I have a motion, please?
Giordano, motion. Giordano, second.
Francisco will second, if you need someone else.
Francisco is on the second, thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Can you just explain what this number one is?
Sure. So, this item is each summer, the county Department of Education puts out a couple forms that are required to be submitted. So, one of them being any dual use. So, a dual use is when you have a classroom that is often divided by a divider, but has two different instructional spaces in the classroom. So, for instance, that carpenter room, in classroom room two oh seven, there's a divider of some sort in the room, and one side has resource class going on, and the other has a different resource classroom going on. But when you have these instances, they have to be submitted to the county so that the county can come out and essentially just confirm and make sure that the space is being used adequately. So, this was a list compiled with Dr. Tuie's help, and he reached out to all the principals, and we are submitting this now, once we have this list, we then submit it to the county so that they can come in and confirm the space. If they don't like something in there, whether it's, you know, they think another space has to be used, or there's not adequate exits or entrances, then they advise us, or they don't approve that use, and we have to change it. So, this is something that is actually, should be done, and is required to be done every year, in addition to some other stuff, like if there's a classroom space with a toilet, not in the space, and they have to go to the outside hallway. So, there's a couple different forms. So, we're making sure, the county has been getting a little more, you know, not picky, but strict, and rightfully so, because it's a requirement of the district, and it's something that we have to confine to. So, this is just making sure we get this on so that they can come out and review those spaces.
Has this been checked every year?
Historically, it has not been submitted, so that is why we're making sure it is submitted.
Okay.
I'm trying to visualize exactly what you mean, so like, I know some of the classrooms actually have like a huge door that divides like two classrooms, or is this more like one classroom that has like...
So, what they're looking for is in a one classroom space where you're dividing it to create two spaces. And what we try to do in most of these cases is, let's say there's two resource, that's probably not the best example. Maybe there's RTI and a guidance counselor, and they're not in the room at the same time. I mean, it does happen where both teachers are teaching at the same time, but we try to look at that when we're creating those types of spaces. Maybe it's the RTI teacher is there for half day, and they push into the classroom versus pull out. So, it doesn't work where, you know, in many of the spaces, they're there, they're not there at the same time, but they still need their own spaces. Sometimes it does happen where they're both teaching at the same time, and it's challenging, but in some schools, we don't have the space, so we divide them, and they're meeting with small groups of students.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Venkatesan?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn is absent, Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jojri?
Yes.
Ms. Mazon?
Yes.
Mr. Slate?
Yes.
Mr. Solkowski is absent, Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolution one for Board Secretary and Board Business passes.
So, we will open up the mic again for the hearing of the residents on any district item. Again, the binder is on the podium. Is nobody, am I closing it? All right, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Brooke Richards Patterson, I just had a quick question. You guys were going over the miscellaneous, number six. And I was just out of curiosity, honestly, I see there's like four different vendors that are gonna be advertising at Lombardi, and I was just curious, what are we getting paid for that? And are we kind of pushing that out, because that's obviously a great opportunity for fundraising for this district? That was it, thank you.
Any other public comment? At this time, I will close the mic and close the hearing of the residents.
I will, I don't have the specific amount off the top, I had a lot of these, these three actually, or whatever it was, they are renewals from last year. But we have, typically over the summer, we send out these letters to local businesses, perhaps moving forward, we just put a template on our website so that people can see this, any district or anyone is looking. But I will send a sample letter to you as well, so that you can share out if anyone's interested.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any old business?
Yes, yes. When Mr. Goodman retired, I gave my praises to him. He made big contributions to the top students of the high school in advanced placement physics and other courses, of course. He was very intelligent in his craft, and it's a big loss for this town and the universe. So, I spend my deepest sympathies to his family and those that benefited and appreciated what he's done for the community. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know, this is old or new, but it's more about fiscal sustainability, I think we have been talking about this. I just want to give an update to all of you, right, from the public. The last twenty days, twenty-five days, I think we've been exchanging quite a bit of emails on this topic, how to sustain fiscally, right, given that, you know, we have been in the last couple years, we have been increasing our taxes. And I was suggesting to my fellow board members, to the administration, you know, why don't we walk backwards, we do know the budget season, it's going to start, so let's walk backwards, let's start from now, the next six months, let's be more iterative, let's come up with creative ideas. How do we, you know, come up with some sustainable plan? Everybody's on the same page, right? I didn't meet with Dr. Bragan, I hear that Dr. Bragan and Mr. Wydell are working on some with ideas, and how we can, you know, sort this out. So, but just contextually, right, there's a lot going on, you know, with administration and the board that we are discussing on this topic, on fiscal sustainability. I do respect the time that we need to, you know, take, let's say, the next fourteen, fifteen days, I think, October, October fifteenth, sorry, thirty days. October fourteenth or fifteenth is the Finance Committee meeting, fifteenth. So, the idea is come present to the public on, you know, what the administration, the staff, and, you know, we as a board, you know, collectively, and review with the public as well, like I encourage people to, you know, come in and participate in those discussions, so we can transparently look at what's out there, right? And then, we need a lot of ideas, we need a lot of stakeholder partnership and insights, you know, from the public as well. So, I encourage, you know, the public, the residents, and the community to come forward, attend that meeting importantly. And then, my recommendation is more to iterate more in shorter cycles than a monthly, or twice a month, or, you know, not twice a month, like two months, once, etc., but have more shorter sprint cycles, so we can, you know, achieve the goal. And at least from my perspective, the real personal goal for me is not to increase any more taxes for the next couple more years. And with that objective, I think we should work towards it, at least, you know, that'll lead us forward somewhere, you know, that we can start with, actually. And these ideas that we are trying to work with, absolutely is not only with the long-range planning. Long-range planning's outcomes will come out, I think the Parrotton Johnson, I don't know the exact name, Mr. Wydell, that company's report is going to come out, yes, that's one of the inputs for this exercise. But we have to also creatively, in parallel, look at what are the other avenues, you know, that we can work with to combine, you know, because long-range planning, registering, etc., is gonna take more time, it's going to be like over the next few years. But the idea here is to come up with other ways that we can, you know, continue to sort out this problem, just sort of give an update, because I've been exchanging quite a few emails, you know, across this board, and so, you know, responses, so I just want to share that, thank you.
Under old business, I want to echo what Mr. Giordano said. I know many people, you know, some of the people I graduated with, and students and stuff like that, staff, knew Mr. Goodman and were deeply touched. I personally did not, my daughter is taking physics this year, you know, she did not meet him, but she got a textbook of his yesterday, and she knew the talent and the quality that came with it, because that was kind of expressed, you know, when it was given to her. So, you know, as I was saying to someone on social media, like, Mr. Goodman lives on, you know, through, you know, still touching students. So, again, condolences to his family. Any new business?
I have something. I was speaking to a few of the parents at the soccer field this weekend, and some of the main comments that they all had in common was how, at the elementary school level, they feel that we should try to acknowledge the students who are excelling more. A few of them had mentioned maybe doing like an honor roll, or something like that, something like the challenge program, but something that the kids who are excelling and working hard all year, they get acknowledged for it. I don't know if that is an individual school thing, or if that could be a district thing, but I think we should be able to implement something for the children who are excelling year after year in elementary school level.
Does that, that would go under Curriculum Committee meeting, so we can add that to the Curriculum Committee meeting?
I have something. The district shirts, I brought a sample. The website is closing next Wednesday, if you guys want to zoom in. This is what the district shirts will look like, try to get me in the Zoom, it'll help the sales. Yeah, so the district, the district website is closing next Wednesday at midnight. Again, we're trying to maintain the tradition, wear the shirts, the pride shirts the first of the month to keep the momentum and keep the synergy in the district, so buy them, thank you.
You should have modeled it for us, Jeff.
All right, give me a few seconds, I'll go behind the curtains, you know.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, as a reminder, for those that qualified, the combined Stay and J, Anchor, and Caesar Freeze programs forms are due at the end of October. Once again, if anyone needs any help or more information about it, they can email me, and I assume the rest of the board could help as well. But I am very open to any questions or comments going forward with taxes and things of that nature. We're gonna be meeting pretty soon, so it's a good step going forward, thank you.
It probably should have gone under the search update. Part of the report that we had from HYA when we went to executive session was the report from the community on what you guys, the focus groups, and the Zoom calls, and the surveys, what the community wants in their next leadership. And so, the summary and the district leadership profile and the characteristics will all be available on the website coming soon. So, we got the first review of it, but you guys will see that, you know, tomorrow or within the next few days. Any other board business? We have to go into executive session again, but we hope you guys all have a safe drive home. Enjoy the warm weather while it's here, because it'll be cold and cool, and the wind will be blowing before we know about it, sorry. Can I have, it is still summer for a few more days, can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Ms. Zone, motion.
Giordano, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're going to exec.
Thank you, all have a safe drive home.